Sorry, they took away the wooden block that mutes the sound, so it's all very rough. All right, the hour of 6:30 having come and gone, I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, June 3, 2025, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alder Yager.
President.
Harrington McKinney.
Here.
Lynn Keller.
Here.
Knox. Alder Knox. Come back to him. Madison.
Epple here.
Martinez Rutherford.
I'm here.
Matthews.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Okovich.
Here.
Pritchett.
Here.
Tischler.
Yep.
Revere.
Here.
Vidiver.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Evers.
Here.
Field.
Here.
Figueroa Cole.
Yeah.
Glenn.
Take me up.
Govindarajan.
Here.
And Alder Knox. Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. All right, as usual, I will remind us that we're here to do the business of the residents of Madison and ask that we do that with grace and kindness and also with decorum in particular. Please refrain from using profanity in your remarks regardless of your role on the council. And I would also like to say happy pride. Our first item is a presentation from our poet laureate, so item one, Legisstar 87898, is a presentation by our poet laureate Stephen Espada Dawson.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me and being among, and it's been a while since I've seen you all here together, so nice to see you. I'm going to read a poem for you all. First, my manager, aka my partner, would be upset if I didn't say that last month I published my debut collection of poetry, Late to the Search Party. It orbits a lot of family work and also the disappearance of my brother in 2009. The collection starts with an epigraph, which I will read before the poem itself. The epigraph is from Matt Rasmussen's Black Aperture. "A hole is nothing but what remains around it." So as I was writing this book and I was thinking about the absences of my life, it got me thinking about what's around the hole, right? What persists despite absence? So I actually just wanted to read the last poem of the book for you all, and this is sort of my answer to that question, what remains around? So this is "Elegy for the Four Chambers of My Mother's Heart." This is an elegy, and believe me, it will end within the small walls of your town home. And because I am selfish, it ends with your words and a memory of just you and me standing above your kitchen sink, pouring water into an ice cube tray. You tell me to watch as the water fills up one corner, then overflows into every empty square. This, you say, this is how I love you. All right, thanks, everyone. Have a great meeting.
Thank you very much. Our next item is an honoring resolution, item two, Legisstar 88496, recognizing June 2025 as Pride Month. And since we both read portions of and presented the resolution to the folks who we're honoring this year at the flag raising, we won't read it tonight, but I would entertain a motion, please. Alder Vidiver.
Moved to adopt.
Second. Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, recording unanimous vote in favor of item two, and I'll just take a moment of personal privilege to say thank you to the Alders that joined us for the flag raising. We had a joint event with the county board and the county executive, and I appreciate folks who came out to support that. And I know there was others that wished they could be there but were working, so sorry that we did it in the middle of the day, but encourage you to celebrate pride all month long. Our next item is the presentation of the consent agenda. President Vidiver.
Recusals first.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Are there any disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda?
I am recused on item 98, Legislative File 88293.
Got that. Alder Revere.
Thank you, Mayor. As I am an officer of the Madison Elks Lodge, I will be recusing from the following three agenda items. The Madison Elks Lodge Alcohol License Renewal, which is Agenda Item 14, Change of Agent for the Lodge, Agenda Item 59, and Agenda Item 72, the Entertainment License for the Elks Lodge. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, then it is time for the presentation of the consent agenda. President Vidiver.
A consent agenda is moved with the recommended action listed for each item on the agenda except items that have registrants wishing to speak or items that Alders have separated out for discussion or debate purposes. This document lists supermajority items, agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, items introduced from the floor, and agenda items with corrections. The following agenda items are supermajority items. 21, Legislative File 88523, report of the mayor submitting a resident committee appointment to the Public Safety Review Committee, requires 14 votes. Item 92, Legislative File 87800, approving a certified survey map for property owned by St. Andrews Church at 1833 Regent Street, requires 14 votes. Item 93, Legislative File 88463, reapproving a certified survey map of property owned by DCH Properties at 702734 East Washington Avenue, requires 14 votes. Item 98, Legislative File 88293, authorizing the City of Madison Water Utility to apply for and accept a grant if awarded of up to $36,277 from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services, and authorizing the mayor and water utility general manager or their designees to sign related documents authorizing acceptance of the grant and the transfer of funds, 15 votes required. Items with recommendations different from the agenda. Item 15, Legislative File 88415, Separated Liquor License Renewal for Hayes Place, the report of the Alcohol License Review Committee is to recommend to council to grant with conditions listed below. Item 16, Legislative File 88422, Separated Liquor License Renewal for Two Pinners LLC, DBA Chiba Hut, Alcohol License Review Committee is to recommend to council to grant with the conditions listed below. Item 18, Legislative File 88425, Separated Liquor License Renewal for 508 State Street Golf LLC, DBA Seven Iron Social, ALRC recommendation to grant with conditions listed below. Item 75, Legislative File 88421, Separated Entertainment License Renewal for Hayes Place, Alcohol License and Review Committee, to grant with conditions below. Item 90, 87834, amending various sections of the Madison General Ordinances to correct inconsistencies in improper references in the Madison General Ordinances constituting a 2025 City Attorney Revisors Ordinance, CCE met and recommends for adoption. Item 91, Legislative File 88129, that is excluded, amending Section 2.01 of the Madison General Ordinances related to modify the start time of common council meetings. We are also excluding items 17 and 76, so those are Legislative Files 88423 and 88424, the Separated Liquor License Renewal and Entertainment License Renewal for Red Rooster. And then we are also excluding item 96, Legislative File 87963, declaring support for the preservation of the federal tax exemption for municipal bond interest. Introduced from the floor is Legislative File 88569, repudiating racial and discriminatory covenants and Madison property records. That will come back to common council on the 17th of this month. And item 106 needs to be corrected, Legislative File 88383, amending sections of Chapter 41 and associated references in Chapters 1, 28, and 31 of the Madison General Ordinances related to historic landmark buildings to update definitions and amend guidelines. This is introduction of new business for referral without debate this evening, and the referral dates are to landmarks on 616 and common council on 617.
Thank you. Are there additional items that Alders would like to see separated from the consent agenda at this time? Alder Harrington McKinney.
Item number 28, 88071. Item number 99, 88327, I'd like to add an additional referral. Item number 109, 88483, and item number 113, 88358, and I'd like to add an additional referral.
Thank you, Alder. On item 99, what is the additional referral that you would like?
Department of Civil Rights.
So 99 is authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute a development agreement for a tax increment finance loan to Wash Flank and LLC to construct approximately 223 units of affordable housing and related parking at 501 East Washington Avenue. The request is to add a referral to the Department of Civil Rights. Alder, again, it's not proper to refer a legislative item to a department. It's only proper to refer it to a committee, so you could certainly call the Department of Civil Rights staff and ask for their input and opinion on this item, but we can't refer it to them. Okay. And then on item 113.
That would be the same.
Same, okay. Thank you, Alder. So we'll exclude then items 28 and 109. Are there additional items that Alders wish to exclude? Alder Govindarajan.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 109 is just for introduction, so I don't think it needs to be excluded.
Thank you for catching that, Alder. So Alder Harrington McKinney, item 109 is on for introduction, so it's not able to be discussed tonight. Thank you, Alder. Alder Pritchett, additional items?
Yes, item 85 for additional discussion.
85?
85, correct.
Are there any other exclusions from the consent agenda at this time? All right, seeing none, we had a little bit of back and forth, so let me go through that all again. The first category is supermajority items. Items 21, 92, and 93 require 14 votes. Item 98 requires 15 votes and will be recorded as unanimous unless there's objection. Items 15, 16, 18, 75 are all licenses of various sorts that are recommended to grant with the conditions in the consent agenda document. Item 90, the recommendation is to adopt. Then we will be excluding items 17, 28, 76, 85, 91, and 96. We're going to do it all together. And then we have one item introduced from the floor, which is Legislative File 88569, and we have one item with corrections, that's Agenda Number 106. The referral dates are 616 to landmarks and 617 to council. There questions? Or should I repeat any of that? Not seeing any confusion. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Just for clarification, Madam Chair, I cannot refer it to a department, but I can refer it to a committee or commission. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so will I have the opportunity to refer those two items? 99, 88327, to the Equal Opportunities Commission? 113, also to the Equal Opportunities Commission?
So Alder, on item 113.
Oh, it's for?
That is for introduction, so it would be appropriate to suggest that referral. On item 99, that is up for adoption, so you'd need to separate it and make the motion to refer.
Okay, thank you.
So is that your desire?
Yes.
Okay, so then we will also separate item 99, and then is there objection to referring item 113 to, I'm sorry, the Equal Opportunities Commission?
Correct.
Yes, we'll get there. So I'm just establishing what we're doing. Excuse me, Alder Figueroa Cole.
Could I, could the other explain what is the ask for that committee on this particular 113?
Alder Harrington McKinney, can you state for the record the reason for the referral?
The reason that I'm having it referred is that I want to look at racial equity, I want to look at ensuring the rights of individuals to serve, and it seems to me that a discussion at the commission will validate the reason for submitting this for approval.
Alder, the item is a loan. If your concern is with the program, perhaps a discussion at the Equal Opportunities Commission on that program?
Okay, let me back up because it seems that I have given, it's not 99, excuse me, let me withdraw 99.
So item 113 is approving a loan to East Morland Community Center from the Community Facilities Loan Program.
So that's questions to staff.
So that item is just for introduction, so when that item, I mean, I would encourage you to reach out to staff and ask the questions before it comes back to council.
Yes.
Okay, so we're not going to deal with 113 tonight?
Correct.
Okay, so then item 99, the request is, instead of adopting tonight, the request is to refer, and I think we'll just exclude that so we can have the item in front of us and you can ask your questions and move a referral if that's the will of the body.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Just in case there's any confusion, let me read the numbers that are being excluded again. Items 17, 28, 85, excuse me, 76, 85, 91, 96, and 99. Okay, I'm not seeing confusion on faces, so we're going to proceed. So that is the consent agenda, and for that, sorry, I got to get all my pages back in order here. For that, Alder Govindarajan, a motion, please.
Motion to adopt consent agenda.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda by Alder Govindarajan and Figueroa Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? With the noted recusals, we will adopt that vote and move on to public comments. So on public comments, our first item with someone wishing to speak is item 96, declaring support for the preservation of the federal tax exemption for municipal bond interest. A registrant wishing to speak is Emily Brock from the Government Finance Officers Association in Washington, DC. And Emily, you should be able to speak.
Well, thank you very much. I am Emily Brock with the Government Finance Officers Association. As a director of federal policy, my job is to educate federal lawmakers. As a director of federal policy, my job is to educate federal lawmakers about the available options for state and local government capital financing, whether it's federally-supported loan programs or housing or new things like opportunity zones or legacy things like municipal bonds. GFOA is there. We know that the tax exemption, aka municipal bonds, provide capital for infrastructure. State and local governments bear 75% of the cost of infrastructure in this country by design. We like to make capital decisions locally, but we need to have the market to underpin those decisions like streets, clean water, schools, affordable housing, things like Madison Metro's bus rapid transit that used about $30 million in bonds on a roughly $200 million project that moves about 9.5 million rides in 2023. It takes the willpower of Congress to maintain the tax exemption of municipal bonds. It actually costs them money. The general scoring that Congress assigns to providing the tax exemption, the cost of allowing investors to claim income that's tax-exempt, is to the tune of about $400 billion over the course of 10 years, which scores municipal bonds as one of the top 10 tax expenditures of the federal government. And because of that, we have to remain vigilant. So where do we stand right now? Congress is considering a tax bill that requires passage of a normal budget. The so-called Big Beautiful Bill has been considered and passed in the House, and municipal bonds pass that round unscathed. Now the bill sits before the Senate, and their responsibility is to take the House bill and its $3.8 trillion price tag and either agree with it or to chart their own path. They can't exceed $4 trillion, so whatever they decide to enhance or add to the bill is going to have to be paid for. And as a top 10 tax expenditure, GFOA, along with the Conference of Mayors, the National League of Cities, have joined together on munis. To be clear, we do not advocate for debt, either more debt or less debt. We don't care about that. What we care about is that state and local governments have options, the chance for Madison to make financing and funding choices that are right for Madison. And we think Congress should too. We have to tell Congress that for us as investors of projects in our communities, if we lose tax-exempt bonds, Madison's going to have to make some different capital financing choices altogether, things that might cost Madison more money. Madison's commitment to supporting this valuable financial tool isn't just protection of a legacy, it's defense of a financing tool that underpins trillions toward infrastructure in our country. And as usual, Madison is leading the way.
That's three minutes. If you could wrap up, please.
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's our only registrant on this item. Are there any questions for Ms. Brock? Seeing none, thank you very much for joining us tonight. And that is the only item that we have public comment on tonight. Alder Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. I see there's a late registrant on agenda item 99, Rick Mackey, wishing to speak.
Thank you, Alder, for refreshing. So then on item 99, we have one registrant wishing to speak, Rick Mackey of Sock Ridge Trail.
Mayor, I don't see Rick online.
Yep. It does not appear that we have Rick in chambers either. So we have no other registrants on that item. There are a few available to answer questions. Are there any questions for registrants? Seeing none. Then we will move to our excluded items. The first of which is item 17, which is Legistar 88423, liquor license renewal for Red Rooster Madison LLC. If there is no objection, we will also take up item 76 at the same time. Item 76 is the entertainment license renewal for Red Rooster Madison LLC, and that is Legistar 88424. Is there any objection? Seeing none. Then on items 17 and 76, we'll start with a short presentation from the city attorney's office, Assistant City Attorney McReynolds.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I sent the report out to the council members, the report of the Alcohol License Review Committee. Basically, the report is findings of fact and conclusions of law, and then the ALRC's recommendation to the council. I also gave you some instructions on sort of the guidelines of this kind of matter before the council. I think the takeaways here are that the Assistant City Attorney Zilivi filed a summons and complaint against Red Rooster suggesting to the, or asking the ALRC to not renew their liquor or alcohol license and entertainment license. Just to clarify, you don't need an entertainment license if you don't have an alcohol license. Those are sort of intertwined. So there's not really a way in which you could take away their liquor license, and then their entertainment license would basically be meaningless. But they could still operate as a rye venue if they didn't have a liquor license. Anyway, at the hearing in front of the ALRC, Timothy Payne appeared for the Red Rooster. He denied some of the allegations in the complaint. I included that in the report, which ones he denied, and those were not considered for the purposes of this recommendation for the ALRC. Assistant City Attorney Zilivi dismissed those instead of having a separate contested hearing just on those contested facts and allegations and just continued on with the rest of the complaint. And so then you see in the findings of fact and conclusions of law, the various paragraphs of the complaint or counts of the complaint that the respondent is not denying. And so in summary, what the respondent, Red Rooster, admitted was that there was at least one date where there was no one on site that had a valid operator's license. There was, he admitted to being open after hours and having patrons who were not employees on the premises after hours, serving alcohol during prohibited hours, having an intoxicated person or persons at the location, and over-serving an intoxicated person specifically on December 6th and 7th. The complaint, which I linked for you in my email, detailed a video that showed times, amounts, and types of alcohol that were provided to an intoxicated employee of the Red Rooster. And then the video also showed the employee leaving. And we know that later that employee crashed into two vehicles, killing the occupant of one of the vehicles. Less serious, but still admitted, were various violations after an inspection from the Division, Wisconsin Division of Alcohol Belvedrages. So the ALRC took those allegations to be true because the respondent admitted them and then determined that it was sufficient to recommend non-renewal of Red Rooster's I think that's a fair summary of the ALRC's report and recommendation, but I'm also happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney McReynolds. Are there any questions for the Assistant City Attorney at this time? Appropriate would be on the process or the substance of the complaint. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Could you please clarify what is the ask for counsel?
Yes, let me pull that up. So the council must make a finding as to whether the allegations in the complaint are found to be true. And as I said, the ALRC recommended that they be found to be true, but that's what the council, the council will need to decide if they find those to be true. And then the council may accept, reject, or modify the ALRC report and accept, reject, or modify the recommendation of not renewing the licenses. And so that can be done in the form of a motion. I suggested language that can be used that I sent out to all Alders if that, if that is helpful for you. I also wanted to point out that I've sent this to both of the parties, the ALRC's report to both of the parties, and they both indicated by email that they did not object. There's something in the ordinance where they can make an objection to the report and then present that, those objections at council, they both decided not to object. And, but they do want to speak to the council, and I think that would be appropriate, given the circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney. Are there any other questions for the Assistant City Attorney? All right, seeing none at this point, we'll have both the registered agent, Timothy Payne, speak and be available for questions, and then Assistant City Attorney Zilivi is also here if she wishes to speak or be available for questions. But we'll start with the licensee, Timothy Payne.
Hello, counsel. I am the owner of the Red Rooster, and I cannot deny the facts of this case. My former general manager, who I trusted with my business, who ran my business without any issues for six months or so, I, I don't know what happened. He decided to have a party at my business, and there's gory details in there, and I can't deny those facts. And he left drunk from my establishment late at night, early in the morning, and caused fatal car wreck, which is absolutely heartbreaking. And as the licensee, I understand that what happens inside the walls of my establishment is my responsibility, and I accept that responsibility. And however, I didn't, for instance, I didn't know he was an unlicensed employee until 11 days ago when I was, when I was served papers. This is, these are, these are things that, you know, I trusted as, as my manager. Again, you know, he betrayed that trust by not, not giving me the appropriate license when I, when I asked him to. And also a little, a little bit about the Red Rooster, I, I, I'm very proud of what we've accomplished. I have live entertainment seven days a week at the Red Rooster. I'm one of very, very few small independent venues in town. I give a, I give a space for bands to play where there aren't many options. We're going to have like our 1,000th, well, if we were for open, we'll have like a 1,000th entertainment, you know, show coming up here in July. So in, in the six months since, since my general manager was incarcerated, I've, I've made changes to, to ensure that this will never happen again. You know, I retrained my staff. I went over all the, all the rules and regulations regarding the alcohol license and, and, you know. Now we, I check security cameras almost every night to make sure the place is closed. We close after, after our shows. So our shows end at nine o'clock on the weekdays and 11 o'clock on the weekends, and we're closed by 10:00 or midnight. You know, we're not, we're not a place where people go to get drunk. We're not, in fact, I have a lot of sober people who come. It's, it's a, it's a venue first and a bar second. And unfortunately, for me to operate in a financially solvent way, I have to have a liquor license. So taking away the license would, would force me to close because there's, it would take away half of my income, and that's not enough to survive. So I, I hope that the committee might consider lessening the charge of not renewing my license today here in this meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Assistant City Attorney Zilivi?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't come upon the decision to ask for non-renewal of this license lately. In the 25 years that I have been the alcohol enforcement attorney before the ALRC, I've read obviously hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of police reports. And this was the first time in those 25 years that reading a report shocked my conscience. The extent to which the behavior on the night in question represented gross mismanagement of the establishment was just astounding to me. Not only a failure to comply with several alcohol beverage laws and ordinances, but also disregard for public safety. And I had thought either he knew and didn't care, or he simply didn't know that both his bar manager and the bartender were unlicensed. And I don't know which is worse, but hearing him say tonight that he didn't know that his bar manager was unlicensed until he was served with the complaint, that is disturbing to me, that even after this incident, he didn't do a deep dive into things to know that he was not licensed. I understand trusting people who you employ, but when you are operating a business that's heavily regulated by the state and the city, I think you have a bigger duty to make sure that both you and your employees are complying with those laws. On the evening in question, three different people were over-served to the point where they were falling down drunk in the establishment. The bartender was there and saw it and kept the place open after hours, kept serving after hours at least one of those people. And then she watched two of those falling down drunk individuals leave the establishment, go to a vehicle, and drive away. And the direct result of one of those was a violent high-speed collision at Stoughton Road and Highway 30 that resulted in the death of somebody. And given all of that, I don't know, well, I don't think any other, I don't think any other penalty was appropriate. I don't think it was appropriate for me to file a municipal court action, seek a forfeiture. I don't think that addresses the gravity of the situation and the disregard for public And another thing that Mr. Payne said tonight was that he almost every night checks his security cameras since this happened. And the almost every night, I don't know why it's not every night, given what happened. But the, I also don't believe this is a one-off, given the level of disregard that was shown that night. was shown that night and the number of ordinances and statutes that were, statutes that were violated. And then again, April 15th, the Department of Alcohol Beverage went in and found several violations of the statutes in existence at that time. So, I believe that the appropriate course of action at this point is to non-renew the license. This is different than a revocation of a license. When a liquor license is revoked, no new license can be issued either to the person or the property for a period of 12 months. With non-renewal, there is no, no limitation like that. So, the licensee can apply for a new license if he wishes at some point in time. And again, if he wants to operate as a restaurant, he can do that, and he can still have the live music. There's no need for the entertainment license if there's no alcohol license. So, really, the only, the only piece of his business that would be missing would be the alcohol. Again, I would ask you to accept the ALRC's recommendation and non-renew the license. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Zilvey. Are there questions for Assistant City Attorney Zilvey? Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. When would the applicant or the license holder, if the license is removed, when, what is the time period where they may be allowed to reapply?
There is no prohibition, so technically, if he wanted to reapply, and, well, I don't know the time limits right now for when somebody applies, but if he wanted to, he could apply now.
So, there's no, you know, whatever you call it, kind of like a penalty, you're not in the penalty box for any time period at all?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions? Alder Knox?
Yeah, I was just wondering, from, from Ms. Zilvey, why did you not consider revocation, which would not allow the person to apply for a license for a year?
Well, one of the reasons is because a revocation, and that's part of the reason, it's, it's like the, probably the worst consequence that can happen is a revocation, because you're taking away something that somebody already has, whereas a non-renewal is you're stopping something from happening in the future. And I just thought it was appropriate to non-renew the license, given the facts.
Okay, and did you, did I hear you say that there were some additional, not actions, but problems at, at this particular establishment?
You mean beyond the night in question?
Yes, yes.
Well, those, those instances aren't considered for the purposes of this action.
No, but I think I heard you say something that alluded to that, did you? Or maybe?
Well, I said I, that I thought it was highly unlikely that this was a one-off situation.
Alder may be referring to the, the state?
Oh, Department of Revenue, when they went in, Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, they went in and they found that the empty alcohol bottles had not been defaced, as is required by the statute, that alcohol had been purchased from someplace other than a wholesaler, which is not allowed under the statute, and the liquor license was not properly posted and framed, and the seller's permit was not visible either.
Okay, and so, I would assume if the person reapplied, it will be up to the Alcohol Review Committee to administer any conditions to that licensing?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Pritchett, questions?
Yes, the question is this, for the licensee to, let's suppose the licensee decides to reapply, could it be stipulated that there are consequences for failure to follow not only, let's say, City of Madison rules and regulations, but in-house? Now, the licensee suggested or stated that there were classes that were offered to employees. Now, you can, you can go beyond that, meaning when you look at a class, you have to think about the conditions under which a person can be hired and/or to serve liquor. I would suggest that you continue to, that you consider looking at classes, look at the, how do you go about vetting those that will be serving alcohol? Because if you don't do that in-house, then how will you know? You know, for example, if someone presents with a license that's not legal, that's a fake license, what steps are you taking to ensure that they know how to determine that a, that a, that a license is, is fake?
Alder, the answer to your question is that the Alcohol License Review Committee can impose conditions on any license, and you see on the agenda tonight that there are quite a few on which we are imposing various types of conditions, but that conversation would come, should the licensee apply for another license, they would have to go in front of the ALRC. The ALRC would have that conversation, would decide if they were going to recommend to grant and with what conditions. And that is a point in time that certainly any Alder can go to the ALRC and recommend conditions or speak to the item, and then, of course, when that, you know, under the circumstance that, that that would come forward, it would also come to the counsel, and the counsel could add additional conditions if you wish to at that time.
Yeah, it's those, although beyond that is what, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for the Assistant City Attorney? Seeing none, then President Bittiver, a motion, please, on Item 17 and 76.
I move to adopt the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and recommendation of the ALRC, and to find as truthful each count that the ALRC found to be truthful and to not renew the Class B Combination Alcohol Beverage License and City of Madison Entertainment License of Red Rooster Madison LLC as recommended by the ALRC.
It's moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Alder Evers?
Yes, Mayor, I'm going to be voting in favor of this. There are consequences, and I appreciate the owner being here and speaking his remorse about the situation. But, we're not, we're not revoking the license, and we're not shutting, we're, we're not inflicting a permanent penalty. But, the tragedy that took place in December, to me, and since I know a fair amount by years of being involved in the entertainment business, I understand how that alcohol subsidizes live music in a city such as Madison and how essential that liquor license is. But, I also understand the enormous responsibility. And to not have the safeguards in place, we're sort of like having a loaded gun in a home that's unholstered. And we know that in the news just recently, an unholstered loaded gun resulted in a six-year-old boy shooting himself in the eye. This is a serious, serious matter. Alcohol is a powerful substance. It's a drug, and it, people become addicted to it. The serving of it comes with enormous responsibility. In many ways, tonight, you are getting off easy. It's a hard lesson, but it's an important lesson that we, as a council, need to come together and assert, not just for your benefit, but for the benefit of all establishments who hold such licenses in our city. It's an important responsibility. I'd ask my colleagues to join me in voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you for coming in front of us again and for even providing more detail on the changes that you already have made. But, you know, I was up very early this morning and was reading through emails, so I felt compelled to write a statement, and I just, I, I need to really get it out, because this has been a very difficult decision. So, I do want to acknowledge all the letters we received, and especially the one from Ms. Payne. And I also want to clarify, the reference to visions was not intended to compare the specific of each of the cases, and it, it was merely to discuss, have a discussion about the, the hearing process. The charges and the outcomes in the visions case had no bearing on my decision-making. I didn't look that case up. I just wanted to know what the hearing process was about. My decision not to renew the license was based solely on the complaint against Red Rooster's license holder and his admission of guilt. The A R C expects and values honesty, which will ultimately benefit you when you come back in front of us in the future. This case highlights the significant responsibility of the Alcohol License Review Committee, liquor license holders, the agents, to ensure the community, this community's welfare. This decision is challenging because it involves the lives and financial stability of others. However, license holders and agents must recognize their roles in contributing to the drunk-driving culture of this state. I firmly believe in personal responsibility. Driving while intoxicated is a choice, it is not just a mistake. We all contribute to fostering a culture of excessive alcohol use when, as a community, we often focus on the lesser impacting issues while overlooking or ignoring Madison's drunk-driving offenses, which are many. The process of granting a liquor license carries the responsibility of considering potential consequences. In this case, overlooking the warning signs that led to this tragedy resulted in harm, a life lost. Forever changing the lives of those close to Matthew Jopki, additionally, those connected to Nicolas Nesta's also face disruption. When such tragedies occur, returning to normal is really impossible. Every single person touched by the trauma must find ways to cope with the losses and redefine a new normal. The status quo is not acceptable, an acceptable path. We must take steps to reform, grow, and find purpose. Denying this liquor license renewal does not mean the end of the business. I encourage, I encourage Mr. Payne to use this time as an opportunity to reset, use the complaint as an opportunity to identify steps to reduce future harm, review the business plan, rally the, rally the team, and return to the A R C and the council later to discuss a new application. I do not intend to use this situation to set an example. However, here we are, and this body needs to be clear. We entrust individuals like Mr. Payne with the privilege of holding a liquor license and expect license holders and agents to implement policies that prioritize harm reduction. For all these reasons, I will be supporting the, the current motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any further discussion? Alder Bittiver?
I just want to, thank you, Mayor. I want to just echo my colleagues' statements and just say that there are resources, both in the city and UW extension, for business development, for being able to create a dry entertainment venue for the period of time for which this license is likely to be not renewed. We want you to be, we want this business to be a successful entertainment venue. There are opportunities, even as a dry entertainment venue, to cater to youth who definitely need space for their access to music and making music. So, definitely want you to utilize the resources that are available to be able to ensure that you do have continued business success in this period of time, should the council tonight choose not to renew your license.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. The motion before us is to non-renew both the alcohol entertainment license. It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of non-renewal? Seeing no objection, that's the vote that we will record. And we will move on then to Item 28. Item 28 is Legisstar 88071, a 21-plus entertainment license for George Vitence Gulfland Incorporated, doing business as Vitence Gulfland. On Item 28, President Bittiver, a motion, please.
Move to adopt with conditions, or grant with conditions.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions on Item 28. Are there questions for staff? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you. Is staff present?
There are, I think, many relevant staff present.
Okay, so, my, my question was, I pulled it for two reasons. Is number one, I wanted to recognize the owners of Vitence. So, selfishly, this is my way of kind of intertwining that, but there were conditions added to the approval, and I'd like to understand what those conditions are.
I'll take an attorney, a clerk, or an Assistant City Attorney to answer that question. Assistant City Attorney McReynolds? On the Vitence, Item 28.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the condition is listed in the agenda. I believe it's that entertainment shall cease by 10:00 PM. That was the condition recommended by the ALRC after hearing from the applicant and considering, I would have to look up and see if the Neighborhood Association weighed in here, but that was the recommendation from the ALRC.
So, that was the only condition, is that what I'm hearing?
I believe so. Yeah, I mean, that's the only thing that's in the agenda. I can double-check, but that is the only condition I see.
And so, Madam Mayor, I have to be really honest, is that I pulled this specifically to highlight this establishment as a community, a place. I pulled it in light of what we just heard from an establishment that licensing was not renewed. And so, I wanted to highlight this establishment as a community place of gathering, where children come, they're held in the highest regard, and it is just appropriate for them to be recognized. I want to officially thank you for bringing such good character within the community, and I am looking forward to that continued place where Vitence is a family, a family-oriented establishment and the good work that you do. And so, please thank you, Madam Mayor and counsel, for allowing me to slide that in.
Thank you, Alder. I did see that Deputy Clerk Burbick turned on his camera. Deputy Clerk, did you have anything that you wanted to add to answer the Alder's questions?
I just want to confirm that there was only the one condition on ceasing by 10:00 PM, the entertainment, and I did not see any additional attachments to that. Usually, if we hear from the Neighborhood Association, that would be attached to the legislative.
Thank you for confirming that. Right, if no other Alder's, Alder Figaro Cole, questions for staff?
Again, I just want to remind the applicant to please verify with zoning, because the application does talk about being in the patio outside and that's a plan commission decision, so make sure to please talk to zoning before you... So make sure to please talk to zoning before you start with the entertainment. We discussed that at the meeting, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Figueroa Cole. It's a good reminder that the entertainment license is not sufficient to be able to actually conduct entertainment. You also do have to get a land use approval through the zoning division. And I do not see any relevant staff here tonight, but there are plenty of staff available tomorrow. All right, the item before us is to grant with conditions. Alder Viderver.
Thank you. I just wanted to add to Assistant City Attorney McReynolds' response to Alder McKinney's question and point out that the applicant, who, as Alder McKinney referenced, is with us tonight in the chamber, had no objection to this license condition. And in fact, their application specifically says that all live music will cease by 9:30 P. M. So there was no controversy at the A L R C. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Right, I have no other Alders in the queue with questions. The motion is to grant with conditions. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote to grant? Seeing no objection, the item is granted unanimously. Thank you for joining us. The Alder is a fan. All right, so that will take us then to item 85. Item 85 is Legisstar 87978, amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances related to the building code fee schedule to update the certificate of occupancy fee. On item 85, a motion, please, President Viderver.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 85. On item 85, are there questions for staff? Seeing no, Alder Pritchett?
Yes. The question that I have is looking at the fee schedule. You know, my question of concern is, you know, could that fee schedule have been done gradually instead of going from 10 all the way up to $50?
We have Director Tucker here.
Hi there. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Alder, to answer your question, yes, sure, it could be done gradually. However, each increase is its own ordinance. So we would be coming back to you a number of times to increase the fee to get to where it needs to be relative to the service that's being delivered.
Mr. Tucker, can you remind the council of what the upper limit on fees is for a service like this? We can't make money off of them.
That's basically it. Yeah, the fees go to cover the cost of the service. And this was a fee that we studied back last year, having not been touched for several decades, as being well below the cost related to deliver the service, giving all the people that touch this process to create the certificate of occupancy and publish it.
And at this, if this passes tonight, will the fee cover the cost of providing the service?
Yes.
Additional questions?
Yes, I ask. Today, I went on a business tour, small business tour, and many of the concerns that were addressed by small businesses, you know, was they felt like they were being choked to death. And so when I think about a fee going from 10 to $50 in one fell swoop, being mindful of you saying that it has been set at this point for days, or weeks, or months, or years, now all of a sudden, at this time, raising it to $50 from 10, you know, is there some way for them to get some relief?
Mr. Tucker, perhaps it might be useful to describe who pays this fee, under what circumstances?
Sure. So this fee is paid by a property owner. It could also potentially be picked up by the business owner. Generally speaking, we're talking about the occupancy certificate for different businesses to open in a place, for dwelling units, for the first, or several dwelling units to be opened in an apartment building, if someone is doing a conversion or alteration to a building that results in a change in use, which would be requiring the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, is how we get to this point. It is a, to describe the service just a little bit more, it involves the communication between the fire department, the building inspection department, and the zoning department collecting together to produce a relevant document that reflects that all three of those agencies have determined that the spaces is safe, legal, and ready to be used for the purpose by which it's being requested. And that is basically how the fee gets, how the fee is allocated towards the service.
Thank you, Alder Pritchett. Thank you, Director Tucker. Are there any other questions for staff on item 85? Seeing none then, I'm sorry, I didn't write it down. Alder Viderver, did you make a motion on this already? Yes, okay. Teach me to not make notes. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Are there, is there any discussion on item 85? Alder, you go.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in support of this motion. This is a service we provide. This is a service we need to provide for a growing city and one that's constantly renewing itself. And to the extent that we do not charge a fee that's sufficient to cover the cost of that service, it's one more thing that becomes a burden on our property taxpayers, who, as we discussed at great length last year, as we looked at our budget situation, we know that compared with other states, it's just playing too high. And certainly that's something during the election season that I heard over and over again. So I think it's important that, to the extent we can with adequate fees, that we try to keep this burden off our property taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. No other Alders in queue for discussion. The motion is to adopt. Is there objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote on item 85 and move on then to item 91. Item 91 is Legisstar 88129, amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances related to modifying the start time of common council meetings. On item 91, President Viderver, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 91. Are there questions for staff on item 91? Alder Viderver.
I think we have a staff presentation. No, we're not doing the staff presentation. No, sorry. Okay, we're not doing the staff presentation.
Are there questions for staff? Seeing no questions for staff. It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on item 91? Alder Duncan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not be supporting this resolution. During our C C E C meeting, I think we had a very good conversation about what this potentially could do for future Alders, for our residents who work nine-to-five or nine-to-five-thirty jobs, and what the impact would be of having that could start at 5:30 with the flexibility, not knowing exactly when potentially things would start. Having the consistency could cause some concerns and issues for residents to be able to participate in our daily meeting, our monthly meetings, bi-monthly meetings that we have. I think that I understand what the intent of this resolution was for, but I do believe that, given that flexibility with our current president, I think that she would be mindful when setting agendas, but we don't know what a future president might potentially do, where they could say it's going to be at 5:30. And if we have individuals who are not able to get here as Alders by 5:30, we could potentially have issues with meeting quorum. And so I will not be supporting this. I think that having the meeting at 6:30 is appropriate in my mind, and that's why I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Viderver.
So just to make sure that all Alders are familiar, that right now it is in ordinance that we cannot start until 6:30 for this meeting. So the purpose of the proposed ordinance change, as Alder Duncan mentioned, is to give us flexibility in being able to start at an earlier time. Just as we currently have the flexibility to have our meetings as hybrid, in-person only or online only, this also allows us a similar type of flexibility. And the will of the body is voted on each meeting to decide on what we will do in the next iterations of this council for the next meeting types. And so were we to adopt this, this would be included in with the way that we set the hybrid, currently hybrid meetings, or, you know, we've talked about having, for example, the meeting before Thanksgiving is only online to accommodate everyone at that time of year. So this provides us with that opportunity. Obviously, there are arguments about whether 5:30 is a late enough start time for full Alder engagement or public engagement. But again, as long as we are offering an online contingent that offers flexibility both to our Alders and the public not to have to be here in person. So I do believe that this is something that benefits both us and the public, to be able to have meetings that start at a more timely period of the evening and ideally get us out at a more timely period of the evening as well. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also will not be supporting this resolution. I think I understand trying to offer more flexibility, but I think this moves us towards reducing public participation. I think, as we know, a lot of people work till 5:00 or so P. M. And, you know, those citizens who would like to participate in the process but may have to deal with things like dinner and, you know, providing for their kids, I just think that 6:30 works as a much better time for people to allow people to participate in our democracy, quite frankly. We already have flexibility. You know, we can determine if the night's going long, we can end and come back if we choose to. So I really think this is a unnecessary complication to civic participation. So I will not be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to say I appreciate Alder Viderver and Alder Govindarajan for bringing it forward and letting us have this conversation at minimum. But I won't support it, and I hope everybody else chooses not to support it either, mostly because having been on council now for, you know, going into the second term, I don't think we need any flexibility on ourselves. I think we need to always find ways to rein in our flexibility so none of us allow ourselves to use it in sort of a manipulative way to get back at each other for some reason or another. The general public expects us to meet at 6:30. We were all elected knowing that we were going to meet at 6:30. I prefer we just continue to meet at 6:30 and allow the public to continue to know where to find us at 6:30 and not play games with our meeting times, not to say that the folks introducing it would have that kind of logic. But there's always room for drama that we don't need. So I would prefer that we just continue to meet at 6:30, not give ourselves any flexibility in that meeting time because we would just only be introducing future chaos that we would need to manage with each other. And I am enjoying our peaceful meetings.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm somewhat ambivalent about this. I understand the makers of the motion have a goal of seeing if it would be possible to have our meetings starting earlier so that we could end earlier. And it is true that we have important meetings like finance and plant commission and other key committees that start earlier at 4:30 or 5:30, and that doesn't seem to necessarily preclude participation from the public. On the other hand, I tend to agree with Alder Madison that, although she didn't say this, there's an element of if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I don't believe the problem of our late meetings has to do with our start time. It has historically had to do with the behavior and the conduct of the people sitting in these, in this room, in these chairs. All too often, Alders pull things off the consent agenda when they had an opportunity to get their questions asked by posing them directly to staff. All too often, we go on and on and on, asking questions and debating, when we could exercise the type of discipline that Alder Madison's inferring, that we hold ourselves accountable, that we discipline ourselves, and we commit ourselves to, towards a meeting that's efficient and effective, that serves the community. So I guess I'm leaning to not support that, but I appreciate what our council president and vice president are pushing toward. I'd be very interested in seeing how things proceed with this body, if we are able to exercise the type of discipline, get our questions asked in advance of the meeting time. Those agendas come out on late Thursday afternoon. You have all weekend long to be able to get your questions answered. That's prudent, it's effective, it's a way to help our meetings end earlier. So I guess I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, Mayor.
Is it appropriate to ask Alder Viderver a question about the motion?
You are absolutely welcome to ask a question. It is up to your colleague whether or not she wishes to respond.
All right. My question for Alder Viderver is, who would be responsible for setting a meeting, given meeting time, and what scenarios would you see that as being 5:30?
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan is next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I yield to Alder Viderver if she would like to answer that question, just to keep this continuing?
Is there objection? Seeing no objection, Alder Viderver.
Right, so the intention was to begin meetings at 6:00 P. M., but to allow that flexibility, for example, if we knew that we were going to have a staff presentation that might be of particular interest or other major items on the agenda that would take a particularly long time, that we could exercise the option of starting at 5:30. However, all would be noticed one month in advance at least, and so that it might not be terribly feasible to start at 5:30 most of the time. So the intention was to have a 6:00 P. M. start time, but give ourselves that leeway.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan.
Thank you. I ditto Alder Evers earlier. I think that was explained perfectly. I will, even though my name is on here, I plan on voting against the 5:30 ordinance. That being said, in your inboxes, you will notice that there is an amendment, and the amendment is basically saying that council cannot start no earlier than 6:00 P. M. instead of 6:30 P. M. I think, I mentioned this at, the executive committee is, during the executive committee debate, I just remembered on the spot that when I was still a student last session, my classes did not end until 5:15 P. M. So it would not be the most efficient manner for any person following me in this seat to be able to get to city council at an efficient manner if meetings started at 5:30. So I think 6:00 P. M. could be some kind of compromise here. This is something that I could see myself voting in favor of. However, 5:30, I think, is problematic for the general public and potentially Alders as well. as well. So this is in your inbox. The clerk is C.C., and so is the mayor. Thank you. So I motion this amendment forward.
Move?
Move.
Alder Govindarajan?
Move an alternate.
Moves an amendment?
Yes.
Do you want to just read the language for the record?
Yes. Would you prefer me to read the entire language?
Just the relevant piece?
Got it. The Madison General Ordinance on the first, the common council, blah, 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 can have its meeting on the first and third Tuesdays of every month at six, at no earlier than 6:00 PM, except in August and December, dot, dot, dot.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All right, so what's before us is the Govindarajan amendment. So if you don't wish to speak to the Govindarajan amendment, just go ahead and pass, but I'll just go through the queue, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not be supporting this amendment because we've, we've had a discussion about if it's not broke, don't fix it. And at this point, we have so many critical things that will be coming before us, shifting the time from, to 5 o'clock, 5:30 to 6 o'clock. I don't think that it's going to accomplish much. It's the fact that future candidates that might be sitting in our seat, you know, whether they, work responsibility, family responsibilities, there are so many variables that we don't know about. And so if 6:30 works and it's not broke, why are we trying to fix it? Because if we're fixing this, then we're looking at changing the executive. So there are too many things that we're looking to change. And so I'm not going to support it. 6:30 is what we signed up for, and 6:30 is what I think that we should, we should stick with.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Lankella?
I supported this one in the C.C.E.C., thinking about constituents, right? So with the change in time, I know if it is not broke, don't change it, is what we are thinking. At the same time, it was 7:30 in the past, is what I heard in the presentation in the past. So we changed it from 7:30 to 6:30 so that we have more participation. And the times are changing. With the changing times, we are now making it online. A lot of other options are there for everybody to participate, including the alders. So that's the other reason why. And the average times that we saw how long this meeting goes and the maximum time that goes as well, it could be eight hours. So constituent participation is also not about the beginning, also about the end, also. The latter items that we cover in the beginning is about honor resolutions, going through the, a lot of consent agendas. It'll take about an hour or so, but it's getting, to me, it felt like it's have more participation on the more important items if we move it a little bit for, ahead of time, with the time. So that's the reason why I ordered for it, and I'm still supporting that.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be supporting the amendment. I agree with what has been being said, that everyone knows right now, 6:30 is when we meet. To put language where it's no earlier than 6:00 PM causes inconsistency for our residents. If we look at the report that Karen and Isaac provided for us, there is a lot of time that we spend on different topics. And I think that by shifting it to 5:30 to 6 o'clock, it's not really going to shorten our meetings. We might get out at 11:30 instead of 12:00. I think if we're serious about looking at how to shorten our meetings, we really need to see what we are spending a lot of time on and making sure that when we are here in the chambers, we are actually focusing on city business, which we were elected to do. And so I will not be supporting this amendment.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Pritchett?
Yes, I will not be supporting it as well. And the primary reason is, I think, as it is right now, there's some sensitivity to people who live on the far west side. Traffic flow, if I didn't have a 6:30 time, getting from where I live to here, trying to take the Belt Line would be a horror story, or coming through town would be a horror story. So 6:30 then has the, it's timed in such a way where the traffic would be lower in terms of me getting from point A to point B. So I will not be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Okowitsch?
Thank you, Mayor. To President Vitiver's credit, on the way in, she asked me, she pointed out, I have many committees that meet much before 6:30, and what do I do then? And I work on the far west side, and I just leave work early, but I was thinking about it more, and I, one thing I really enjoy about the 6:30 start time is it gives me much more time to prepare. I mean, common council has a much larger agenda, there's a lot more going on, it gives me time to read reports and prepare my notes. I also agree with a lot of what's been said, that I don't think moving the start time earlier is going to make the meeting shorter. Meetings tend to just take the amount of time that are allotted to them. We don't have an end time for common council meetings, but I think we'll find ways to fill up time. This item might be a good example.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak. What's before us is the Govindarajan amendment to change the no earlier than, from 5:30 to 6:00. Just as a procedural reminder, where you're voting on whether to amend the motion, we will then also have to vote on the motion. So the question before us is changing 5:30 to 6:00 PM, and then we will vote on changing 6:30 to 6:00 PM. Okay? So what's before us is the Govindarajan amendment anticipating disagreements. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Uguir?
Aye.
Aye. Harrington McKinney?
No.
Lankella?
Aye.
Aye. Knox?
No.
No. Madison?
No.
No. Martinez Rutherford?
No.
No. Matthews?
No.
No. Mayor?
No.
No. O'Brien?
No.
No. Okowitsch?
No.
No. Pritchett?
No.
No. Tischler?
No.
No. Vever?
Aye.
Aye. Duncan?
No.
No. Evers?
No.
No. Field?
No.
Figaro Cole?
No.
No. Glenn?
No.
No. Govindarajan?
Yes.
Aye. That is four ayes and 16 nos. Four ayes, the Govindarajan amendment fails. We're back to the main motion, which is to allow council meetings to start as early as 5:30. Alder Pritchett?
No.
Is there further discussion then? Seeing no further discussion, the motion is to adopt anticipating disagreements. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Uguir?
No.
No. Harrington McKinney?
No.
Lankella?
Aye.
Aye. Knox?
No.
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 Madison?
No.
No. Martinez Rutherford?
No.
Matthews?
No.
No. Mayor?
No.
No. O'Brien?
No.
No. Okowitsch?
No.
No. Pritchett?
No.
No. Tischler?
No.
No. Vever?
Aye.
Aye. Duncan?
No.
No. Evers?
No.
No. Field?
No.
No. Figaro Cole?
No.
No. Glenn?
No.
No. Govindarajan?
No.
No. That is two ayes and 18 nos. There's two ayes and 18 nos, the motion fails. And that will take us then to item 96. Item 96 is Legisstar 87963, declaring support for the preservation of the federal tax exemption for municipal bond interest. On item 96, President Vitiver, a motion, please.
To adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 96. Are there any questions for staff? Is there any discussion? Seeing none of either, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 96? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 96. And that will take us to item 99. Item 99 is Legisstar 88327, authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute a development agreement for a tax increment finance loan to Wash Franklin LLC to construct approximately 223 units of affordable housing and approximately 68 parking stalls located at 501 East Washington Avenue in TID 53. On item 99, a motion, please, President Vitiver.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 99. On item 99, are there questions for staff? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you. My, my question to staff was centered around number 13, where it talked about affirmative action, MGO 3902. And when I read that, it said that, it sounded as though if the, where are my notes? It sounded to me that it was not clear that the affirmative action requirements were going to be met. It said if that, if they were not going to be met, the attempt to have them met. So I'd just like for staff to speak to that, that area around item number 13, where it talked about affirmative action and equitable investment.
So Assistant City Attorney Rubliss is here. Can you speak to that?
Yeah. Can you?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Alder, this is kind of standard language that goes in all loan agreements when the city is helping fund housing program, projects, whether that's through TIF or the Affordable Housing Fund. I think the language you might be referring to is if a developer does not meet the goals that they basically agreed to with Department of Civil Rights, then they have to show good faith efforts. So they basically have to show what they did to try and meet those goals. So that's kind of how the process works. If, if they don't meet the goals and they haven't made good, good faith efforts, then, you know, they might be subject to, you know, some kind of consequences for that. But this is kind of the, the standard reference to our affirmative action ordinance that goes in all of our loan agreements. And like I said, I think the language you're referring to has to do with developers having to make good faith efforts.
Specifically on 13B, it says, setting affirmative action goals and identifying whether they have been met a good faith effort. And so is that what I'm hearing is that a generalization of what good faith effort is? Is that, help me to better understand what that means.
So the, the developer has to meet with Department of Civil Rights to set a goal for the project. I believe that's already happened on this project. I think we typically require that before it comes to council. So that's what B is talking about. C, basically, once the developer has, is at 80% completion, which is basically like how much of, it's defined by like how much of their project budget they're at. So once they've spent 80% of the project funds, at that point, they have to show that they are in compliance with the affirmative action ordinance. We hold back some of the loan funds until they're at that 80% completion as a way to help ensure that they're complying with the ordinance. So that's the significance of the 80% completion, is we hold back some of the loan funds, and then at that point, we make sure they're in compliance with the ordinance, and if they are, then we can release the remainder of the funds. And again, if they're not, if they haven't met those goals at that point, then they have to show to, to Department of Civil Rights what they have been doing to meet the workforce, the workforce utilization goals.
And so a follow, final follow-up question is, is that the setting of those affirmative action goals, the Department of Civil Rights is at the table as they set up these goals and are measuring whether they met them or working toward fulfilling them? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. It is the Department of Civil Rights that sets that goal. So they have a meeting with the developer. You know, if they come to the city seeking TIF assistance as part of the process of negotiating the terms, they have to go to Department of Civil Rights, have a meeting with them, set a goal, and then they have reporting obligations. So they have to submit, I think, I'm not positive, I think it's monthly reports to Department of Civil Rights. And so they, they have an ongoing reporting obligation to DCR to make sure that they are complying with those requirements.
Okay. Good. That was a word that I wanted to hear. It's, it's ongoing, and it's not just good faith, it's ongoing checking in with Department of Civil Rights, whether they're moving to those affirmative goals.
That's correct. It's an ongoing, ongoing reporting obligation. Civil Rights then actually sends out a letter. Again, I'm pretty sure it's every month, basically tracking where they are with their project-specific goals and letting them know, like, if you're not hitting this goal, you know, you need to, if you don't, you know, reminding them, if you don't hit it, you're going to have to come to us and show those good faith efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Thank you, Assistant City Attorney. Are there any other questions for staff on item 99? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, then is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 99? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 99. That will bring us to the end of our agenda. Are there any additional announcements or introductions of items from the floor? Alder Figaro Cole?
This weekend, I think it is. The Wear Orange theme, please, make sure to join one of those events.
Right, there are three Wear Orange events that are working towards reduction of gun violence. Encourage alders to join if you are able. Also would note that there is a celebration for our outgoing Metro General Manager on Thursday. If you don't have the details, let me know, I'd be happy to share. Are there any other introductions from the floor or announcements? President, excuse me, Alder Figaro Cole?
You also have some, the budget meetings?
Yes, I do not have the schedule of budget meetings, but let me find it quickly. So our first budget engagement session is tomorrow night at... So our first budget engagement session is tomorrow night at, at the Central Library. I believe it starts at 6:00 PM, and encourage everyone to engage. There are several more out through the month, which I believe you all have the schedule for. Alder Harrington McKinney, an announcement?
Not an announcement, just a clarification, Madam Mayor. The additional referral to the Equal Opportunity Commission, did we resolve that, or did I miss that?
Alder, that item was on for introduction, so you'll have another chance to refer it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Seeing nothing else, Alder Uguir, I believe it is your turn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we stand adjourned.